Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I've been making that-
It's long ago to have them pick him down, pick him away, or-
It was lovely by freezing it.
It was such a base treatment.
Yeah. The Amelino later-
It was a full screw, sir.
Couple of years ago, he felt two from the-
There, there's not be-
It's a lucky year, though.
No.
Well, this here, when it was in my driveway, not my driveway, took down my power.
Oh, it took your power?
Well, actually, it didn't. It took the power, I lost my house, but it still had-
It's tough, huh? So you still had electric?
Yeah.
It happened about a block from there. It has one strap like a-
It was-
Things good?
How we tend to set? You have to-
Yeah, right now.
Luckily, of course, people-
You almost hate to say it.
That came over, and we attached it to the- It's a hundred quid. It's a professional courtesy. And it was easy. He had the right thing. I had my ladder all set up.
Well, I'm just even how are you, then you don't want to-
He did a whole-
You guys, what is there with ice?
What, you're-
Politicians.
I go, what's the last name, is it Ice? Well, they get in slow.
I'm getting waiting, keeping him open the jar than the oil.
The two guys didn't notice it at that.
Yeah, that's it.
How's the dogs doing, Johnny?
What?
Are we going to do it okay?
Yes, they are.
Okay, that's good.
It's a miracle. My little boom was all sick, and he came back on his own. And my chicken too.
She worked with the children to want him in, and you're here to watch the children?
I don't know, even if that didn't help. He just couldn't stand, and his vision wasn't paired, and then-
Okay, let's- All right, let's go ahead and get started. I'm gonna go ahead and read the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, in due respect, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite- One announcement, we have James Copas here, who represents us in Albany, in fact, and newly elected a few months back, and so we're grateful to have him come here. In fact, he or one of his staff members is normally here for each of the meetings, so it's an opportunity if somebody wants to see him or get a message to him, that's a good way of doing it.
Last time he came, that he gave us some money. Do you have any money?
Yeah.
I can't do that every month.
Every month.
Okay.
Well, we'll take what we can get when we can get it.
Don't we look at us for being lazy?
Okay, and we appreciate it. Is there any amendments to the agenda? If not, we normally open up a privileged floor on anything on the agenda if somebody wants to talk about that. Okay, well, before we start the meeting, I'd like to talk about what we- One of our employees' husbands died, our town historian, Michelle Figley, meaning. She grew up in Goshen, went to Garre Hall, St. John's, lovely, lovely lady. Her husband died on Monday, and the wake was today, so I'd like to just have a moment of silence on her behalf and his behalf. Thank you very much. Someone like to make a motion if we open the public hearing regarding water sewer information and rate adjustments?
No more.
Second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Excuse me, has everybody got a copy of this? Okay, yeah, get up, go to the court.
Big pile. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming because- Because you are the town citizens, you are the citizens of the water and sewer districts, and we work for you. And we need to- You need to hear from us on how well we're doing.
Right.
Okay, got another-
Oh, you're all right. I wish you would've stayed home.
Okay, well, let me see if we get started then, okay? All right. The town of Goshen Water and Sewer Team really starts with the town board. The town board has responsibility for establishing the goal of where we go and what it looks like. We also have to put strategies in place on how we're going to achieve that goal. And the third thing that we do is we deploy the resources. And in life, there are only three resources, no matter where you're at. Time, which we never seem to have enough of, money, which we don't seem to have enough of, and people. And we can always use good people. So the town board are the ones who do those three things. Create the vision of what we want, the strategies to get there, and apply the resources accordingly. Which brings up our department head, Broderick Knoll, he's a gentleman up here with a blue coat on. You'll see it says Broderick Knoll-NE. Broderick is a mechanical engineer, he's out of Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute. He was a design engineer, still is a design engineer in his own business. Broderick has been with us as the department head of Department of Public Works and Water and Sewer. Someone's- Why don't you turn your mics off?
Mine's off.
Yeah, for- Mine, because it's- Okay, I think- Be better.
I think we said him ahead.
Okay. The- But having an engineer in the water and sewer department's like having a doctor in the family. So if you have a bellyache or something, you can tell if your husband or sister or something, the doctor, then, well, do you have a gas pain, or do you have a more serious problem, like appendicitis or whatever? And Broderick is that kind of resource for us. He has saved you and saved us a lot of consternation, a lot of money, and a lot of lost time. And I'm very appreciative of what he does for us. Our water and sewer operator is Joe Klopchen, he's licensed by the state of New York. He too is a college graduate. He's taken all the coursework to become a licensed water sewer operator. He's been with us since 2004 or 2005. We have two water and sewer maintenance technicians, Mark Warren Jr., who's been with us since day one, and David Doty, who's been in the department probably about a year or so. Administrative support is Barbara Sakolowski. If you call in wanting to have, you have questions relative to the billing or this or that, Barbara's normally the one you talk to. William Standish is a college graduate accountant, he's our budget officer. He looks after your money, he looks after my money, very, very good guy. And the water and sewer co-commissioners are myself and Ken Newbold. We've been on this job eight years now, I think we've seen everything once, perhaps twice, and so it's pretty hard to show us something we haven't seen before. On the next page, I wanna do it a little bit different than I've done in the past. I wanna go back and share with you where this town board's been. We've been together now eight years. And if we go back, the first thing back in 2006 is, we needed to replace the chronically leaking water line in section A of Hamiltonian Park. And for those who live in Hamiltonian Park back then, you remember you had ten water leaks in twelve months. It cost seventy-seven thousand dollars to fix those leaks. The total budget for Hamiltonian Park water was only eighty-five thousand, so it only left eight thousand to run your show. The fact is, we didn't have the money to pay all the bills. Had we not fixed that line, we'd be in big bad trouble. The town was asked to take over the Scottstown Water District after abandonment by its owner. The Orange County Health Department had placed the district under a boil water notice due to citizen health concerns. And I can honestly say, that was a frightening experience. I was in my office, I got a call from Dr. Hudson in the Health Department, and she said, Doug, can you get over here right now? I said, well, okay. And I got over there, and she had a table this size, and about a dozen people sitting around it, with an empty chair. And she then, she and the others started telling me how bad things were in Scottstown Water District. And how the water was not healthy to drink without boiling first. Now, how did something like that happen in the town of Goshen? It happened through neglect and not funding improvements at the appropriate times. So that was on our plate, also in 2006. We've had higher rates in groundwater inflow and infiltration into Hamiltonian Park and Arcadia Hills sanitary sewer lines. Now, I and I, as they call it, a sewer line is not pressurized. It's got lower pressure than the soil around it. So when the water, the water table goes up, okay, hydraulically, if there's a hole in that line, it will go through that crack or that hole and into that line. That water then becomes part of the sewage, and it's pumped to the village, and they charge us to process it. And so in reality, citizens were paying as much or more to treat the water than they were the sewage. And we know how much water was getting in because we deliver water to the homes with a meter at each home. And we know how many gallons of sewage that goes to the village. The difference is how much water slips into the line. And so we have major problems. Next thing was, is there's been, when the village built their new sewer plant, there were excessive and unsubstantiated sewer charges levied by the village of Goshen following the building and startup of the new sewer plant. And it was one of those things, they had tremendous costs in building this plant, they just passed on it, they thought it was appropriate. We challenged that, and to make matters worse, they were, we were both using a fifty-year-old intermunicipal agreement, which was long outdated. The next one, there was little to no strategic planning in place for infrastructure improvements. We were so busy covering up breaks and pumps that are failing and these things, we weren't forward-looking to what we're gonna do next. We were too busy spending the money fixing broken things. Environmental issues were not defined or considered in regard to future needs. They were way down on the list. We were more concerned with getting potable water into the homes than we were environmental issues at that time. And there was no focus on continuous cost reduction. No organization should be in place without considering ongoing cost reduction. Otherwise, you're just wasting money, whether it be a household, a town, or a private enterprise. So that's what we've had to manage as a board within the eight years. The next page says, well, what'd we do about it? In fact, there were two ladies from Arcadia Hills, I really wish I remember their names, they were tag team, they were on extensions, on the same line, they called me. And they were cleaning my clock, you know, all the things that were wrong, dirty water, high cost, and finally, the lady in desperation said, somebody has to do something. And she burst into tears. Well, I don't do that, and what would be my wife and these two ladies that I didn't meet? And I got the message, we have to do something, and that's what we've been doing since. The first item is, for Hamiltonian Park water line, Mr. Newbold and I went over and talked to John Hall, Congressman John Hall. And we did a pretty good job of begging, we had it all laid out, what we needed, and he secured a grant of four hundred thousand dollars for the hundred and sixty-six homes in the Hamiltonian Park. It took two years to get the money after it was approved, but we got, we only actually, we got, we got three hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Everybody was processing it, kept thirteen thousand dollars of the money, that's how the government works. We replaced the line in 2007, and we've not had a water leak since. Problem resolved. Number two, rebuilt Scottstown Water Facilities. My predecessor had Stan Tech Engineering come in and stood right over there and gave us a chart of what it's gonna cost to rebuild that facility. And they said in 2005 it was gonna cost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to rebuild the facility. It shocked all the citizens in that subdivision. They didn't want the town to take it over because they didn't, they were gonna have to shock out ten thousand dollars per household. Well, we told them we would do our best, we couldn't guarantee, but we're the team to do it. Private citizens cannot do what's required, just can't do it. So we went at it with a vengeance, and on the filing sheet, this one, we spent a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars. We came in under budget, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars. We spent less than twenty-five percent of what the engineers said they were going to do. And the way we did that is we used the recession for our advantage. We went out, we needed to replace the tank, for example, the tank was one-third full of dirt and rust. And we went out, we got an RFP, we went out for quotes, they all came back in with big numbers, and we turned them all down. We said, we can't afford you. The town then went down to North Carolina and bought the tank, no intermediate, we just bought directly from the manufacturer. Brought the tank home, sat out on the lot there for about a year, went out for bids again, and got someone to install it for a little or nothing. So, because they were now in their third or fourth year of the recession, they wanted to keep the men busy. So that couldn't happen during normal good times, but it happened fine during bad times. We implemented plans to reduce inflow and infiltration, and I'll share that with you later on, what we've been doing. The town board challenged the village regarding sewer charges. It took three years to resolve the issue. The village board was angry at us, sometimes were nasty to us. But we prevailed. We put together what I call an Olympic team. We had the right engineer, the right accountant, and this board, we went at it, and our right attorney, and we went at it, and we got everything we had asked for. Which you, and we didn't want anything that was not deserving to it. I mean, we didn't want something that was not, shouldn't have got, but we got everything that we should have got. We also developed a new five-year intermunicipal agreement. We eliminated that fifty-year-old one that didn't work, and that agreement will go from the year 2011 to 2015. We've also implemented an ongoing cost reduction plan, and that plan that I value so much, in 2012, we saved a hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. And I'm gonna show you a page in a moment where I can put down a list of what we've done. And then we've implemented an ongoing environmental improvement plan, and I'll show you what we're doing in that regard. So if you go to the one, it's called, the page called 2012 Achieved Cost Savings. The first item is electricity reduction. George Lyon, sitting to my left, he went out and started working with electrical alternate suppliers. And he secured for the town for two years, 2012 to 2013, an alternate supplier of energy that gave us a three point two, two cent savings per kilowatt hour for a two-year contract, starting in April, I mean, sorry, July 1st of 2012. That along with the, Mr. Knoll has replaced some pumps with more efficient pumps, and ballast and lights, and this and that, new ideas to save energy. And you can see going down there, for example, Arcadia Hills, we saved eleven hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents versus the same time last year. We, the water sewer operator cost reduction, I called Mr. Klopchen, and I said, Mr. Klopchen, we have Mr. Broderick Knoll here now, he's an engineer, he's doing a lot of the work that you were doing before. I want you to sharpen your pencil and tell us what you can do for us in reducing your costs. And I was home eating a peanut butter and jelly sandwich at lunchtime when I called him, when the idea hit my mind. So he's, I'll call you right back. I said, no, no, you take all the time you need, just sharpen your pencil, I want a big number. He called back in about two minutes, he's, well, Doug, I've reduced my charges to you, eight hundred dollars a month. And he did. And so it's ninety-six hundred dollars a year that he doesn't get, and we're now in the second year of that. Mr. Knoll replaced both of the pumps in Hamiltonian Park in 2011. And we were averaging one and a quarter repairs per year for the pumps that we had, at seventy-five hundred dollars a repair. So now, instead of paying ninety-three hundred and seventy-five dollars per year for repairs, to the pump repair shops, we're giving them nothing, because these new pumps are not failing. And they're state-of-the-art, highly energy-efficient. They should have been replaced ten, fifteen years ago. The IMA and what we've been doing on I and I, the village sewer charges this year, we were charged thirty point five percent less for Hamiltonian Park, and nine percent less for Arcadia Hill. Between the two, the bill was over fifty-one thousand dollars less. And it's for two reasons. One is, and we'll show you later on, the new IMA, the new contract we have the village, is really beneficial to the town, but beyond that, we're not sending them as much water. We still send them a lot of water, but not as much. In personnel, we reduced one full-time person in the, the man resigned and went to Florida, the state of Florida, worked for his father-in-law. We backfilled him in with something in the highway department, but we, the way it's working out, we're saving the equivalent of benefits, so we get about a thirty-nine thousand dollar savings on that particular item. And then Mr. Knoll is rehabbing, rebuilding our water sewer truck versus buying a new one. He intends to spend about ninety-five hundred dollars in doing so. The new truck is likely is forty-five hundred, so he's gonna save about forty-five thousand, pardon me, I love it. We're gonna save about thirty thousand, five hundred dollars. So all total for the year 2012, we've saved a hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars, eighty-four cents. And that's bona fiable, that is dollars that we were gonna give to somebody else, had we not done these things. The next page is, I'm gonna start with Hamiltonian Park, about our accomplishments. We implemented the second year of the new intermunicipal agreement. I'm gonna explain it here so that I don't have to explain it under Arcadia Hills, because this is one and same. If you recall, the village had a dirt pile, where they removed the old landfill from the village and put it in a dirt pile. And we, in our arbitration, shared with the arbitrator, nobody in the town ever put in that sewer, in that landfill. That was a village-owned, village-operated landfill, so people in the town of Goshen should not have to pay for relocating it. And he agreed. So we do not pay for any of that relocation charge, putting it there to begin with or taking it away. We got a twenty-four percent reduction in the debt service, principal and interest, because the new sewer plant was twenty-four percent larger than the old plant, and we couldn't capitalize on that. They wanna build a plant bigger, fine, but we shouldn't have to pay for that, so we don't pay for that. The arbitrator agreed with that. We got reductions in administrative charges, and I, don't hold me to this number, but I think it was about sixty thousand a year for all administrative charges, and so whatever they were, now let's go back to the IMA, but we don't pay our share of those. We pay a reduced share. And the last item is, we don't pay a ten percent out-of-village fee for the principal and interest, for the debt. We pay, we pay a premium, ten percent premium for use of the village plant operations, because we're out of the village, which is fine. We focused on reducing I and I, we've completed inspections of a hundred and fifty-six homes for inappropriate connection, things like sump pumps and roof drains and things. We have eleven houses remaining to look at. The real reason we're not, these eleven haven't been done is because people are not home when we're working, and vice versa. But we have eleven houses to go. We found two inappropriate connections. I didn't see them, Ken saw one and said it was a major gusher. Every time this person's sump pump went on in the basement, it was pumping water right into the sanitary sewer line that we all had to pay for. We rehabilitated three severely damaged and leaking manholes. And I did the calculation on this myself, and I figure it's about five million gallons of water. If you take thirty-five gallons a minute, times twenty, sixty minutes in an hour, twenty-four hours a day, times a hundred days, it's about five million gallons. And that's water that we will no longer have to pay for, you know, as sewage. In 2013, by the way, those were rehabs late in 2012 or early 2013, so we didn't see much of that on the sheet in the numbers this time around. In 2013, we're gonna continue to identify these high-impact leaking manholes, and our plan is to spend thirty-five thousand dollars repairing them. We're gonna continue with our ongoing cost reduction ideas, and I got another idea I wanna put on there in pursuit next year. We had a real coup here. We, last year, I said we were negotiating with a company called New York Farms LLC. They wanna build homes out of the old Chester Road, on the old Coke Farm. They wanna build any of these seventy or seventy-seven homes. And we said, well, why don't you come in and be part of the water and sewer districts for Hamiltonian Park? And they agreed with this, we've talked to the people in Hamiltonian Park, we agreed to it, we finalized negotiations. As part of that negotiation, New York Farms is going to give a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to the citizens in Hamiltonian Park to work on their sewer problems. Just for the privilege of being there and being connected in. Now, that's pending right now, because it's not, we don't get the money until they start building those homes, and that could be a year or two away. But the deal is signed off on. Mr. Knoll is going to install a, really, a lift station, a sewer pump backup generator. He's designed it, priced, or, I forgot, specced it out. It's a generator that will run on natural gas, so we don't have to fill up with gasoline or diesel, there's no leaking, hooked right up to the natural gas line. If the power goes off in Hamiltonian Park, for whatever reason, hurricane or thunderstorm or whatever, the pumps are going to run, and will avert a problem with our spillage of sewage. The next thing that we're going to be doing in the next few weeks is to initiate negotiations for further expanding the sewer district with Maplewood subdivision. Now, Maplewood wants to build somewhere between ninety-five to a hundred and five houses, or units, across the road, off across on Craigville Road. And we're looking for them also to share the sewer. If that's the case, you add seventy-seven homes for, there are a hundred and sixty-six homes today in Hamiltonian Park. You add seventy-seven or seventy for New York Farms, and you put in another hundred, give or take, for this one, Hamiltonian Park's gonna be the largest- give or take, for this one, Hamiltonian Park's gonna be the largest single water and sewer district in town. And the advantage of having a large district is if something breaks, you spread it across more homes. We have these small subdivisions of forty, forty-five homes. It's a killer when something breaks and you gotta go to the people's say, fix it. If you have five hundred homes, it's a whole lot easier. Okay, and the district, the, uh, that's it for sewer for Hamiltonian Park. Water, uh, for two thousand thirteen, routine maintenance, we're gonna implement our ongoing cost reductions. We're gonna, um, we're gonna expand, well, wait a minute. I got something mixed, I got two things into one. This next item, expand water district, New York Farms. The water district, they're gonna give us eighty thousand dollars to add, to work with that, become part of the Hamiltonian Park water district. That should have been up under, under a two thousand twelve accomplishment. That's already done. It too is pending. We don't get the eighty thousand dollars till they start building the homes. And that water will go toward building a second water storage tank. Okay, and then lastly, we're gonna initiate negotiations with the water, with Maplewood for expanding the water district again. So that's Hamiltonian Park. Arcadia Hills, again, implementing the second year of the new IMA. We focused here on the inflow and infiltration. We inspected two hundred and eighteen houses for inappropriate connection. We have thirty-nine houses remaining. We eliminated four inappropriate connections, sump pumps, roof leaders or whatever it was. And we rehabilitated six severely damaged leaking manholes. And every time you fix one of these manholes, the groundwater stays out. The plan to action for the sewer district for two thousand thirteen is, we're gonna complete these inspections for inappropriate sanitary sewer connection. We're gonna spend another thirty thousand dollars on the I-N-I manhole project. And I'm gonna look as the year progresses. If it looks like we're, we're, we have more money in the bank, I'm gonna spend more money in the bank toward fixing those manholes. And I think that will happen in the second half of the year. We'll continue with the ongoing cost-reduction ideas. Everything for the water district's the same as Hamiltonian Park with one exception. We're gonna prepare for a two thousand fourteen inspection and potential repair of the water storage tank. So we'll have to put together a request for, for pricing or quote. We'll do that late in the year. We'll go out for competitive bids, select who's going to do it, who's got the ability to do it. And what they do is they put a camera down in the tank, in the water, and they go around and they look in the video and they take pictures and whatnot, and they can tell exactly what the condition of the tank is. And then if we need to take the tank out of service, drain it, clean it, repaint it, repair it, put it back in service, may not need that, but we think in two thousand fourteen we need to look at that. Next page is Stonehedge. And, uh, we continue, in two thousand twelve, we continue to focus on the backup well. We put a new well in, a backup well in, in two thousand eleven. But the Department of Health and our engineers saying it's got bacterial contamination. And they think the contamination's coming from surface water, but they don't know how it's getting into the well. It doesn't necessarily have to come off the surface and go down the side of the casing. It could be a hundred feet under the water, come to the casing and go down. And so how would you fix that? And I've got some ideas, so I'm gonna talk to that in a moment or so. We also replaced twenty-six home meters with new models. And this time, the town got a little smarter. At Hamiltonian Park and Arcadia Hills, we went out and we hired a contractor to buy them and install them. And it costs more. And Broderick's got, we buy them at our cost now, and Broderick's got his guys going out and installing them, saving the money. So it's cheaper for each household. They put twenty-six in, they have sixteen to go. And as, we got the meters, it's just we've got to marry up the availability of the family left in the house to do the work.
Six, ten minutes.
Yeah, but you gotta be there. Yeah, yeah. The, uh, the next thing that, here, I go back to the doctor in the, in the family. We've had every year one or two waterline breaks in Stonehedge. And we shouldn't be having them. It's deep in the ground, the pipe should not be fracturing. Well, Mr. Knoll said, "You know what I think it is, Doug? We pump these wells at high pressure, a hundred and five pounds per square inch gauge pressure. That's high." And what's happened? We turned the pumps off and the water starts going back down the pipe, and then it turns back on and has to overcome the head pressure. And when it does, it's fracturing the line. So he's got a programmable controller, logic controller, that's put in place. He programmed it to have a delay. And by delaying this process, he thinks he may very well have eliminated the waterline. If you stop to think about that, each time a waterline breaks, it used to be seventy-seven hundred dollars, probably leave that to that. So we'll see how that works. Plan to action, uh, there's another subdivision being built adjacent to Stonehedge. And the Rieger brothers are building it. And this could be a large, large subdivision. And we're looking, and they're gonna build their water storage tank not too far from our water, water storage tank. So what I'm thinking, rather than putting good money after bad in that well, I'm gonna hold off the Department of Health, let them build that subdivision and see if we can hook into them for backup water, at least initiate the action. But in the meantime, our engineers do have a couple ideas of things they wanna do with that backup well that might correct it. We'll replace the remaining sixteen meters, and we will implement ongoing cost reductions. The next one is Scothtown. Uh, this is the one I, where I shared, we spent a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars between the years two thousand six and two thousand twelve. We have completely rebuilt the water system. It is bought and paid for. We paid cash. Nobody owes anything to anybody. It is owned and operated by the people in that subdivision. There's one thing remaining. It was in such tremendous, horrible condition when we got there, brush and weeds and things. We were cleaning the brush away and the weeds away because of fire hazards. We didn't wanna burn down the little building that we had there. And they found a piece, a case with a pipe sticking on the ground. They went and checked it out, put a pump in it, and it's watering. It was a backup well, not on a map, no one knew it was there. It's a backup well. And what we're going to do is qualify that backup well as a well. And it's gonna take about ten thousand dollars to do all the testing and meet all the requirements of the County of Orange Health Department. So when it's all said and done, we will have two wells out there versus one, and then you're home free. There's not, there's nothing else to do other than just routine maintenance. The next page is capital projects. And this is where we're gonna spend money in two thousand thirteen. If you were to add all the numbers up, it's two hundred thousand dollars. It is two hundred thousand dollars that we have as a consequence of savings in our savings plan I talked about, plus the, the increases in rates that we gave you two years ago. So we have the money in the bank. And we're gonna spend this money, and we think we're gonna reinvest back into your infrastructure. So now let's go to the next page, which is, this is what you came to here, I'm sure, or how much is it gonna cost you? The first one is Hamiltonian Park Water. And, uh, in Hamiltonian Park Water, we're going to give you a half a percentage point reduction. Doesn't amount to much. But in two thousand ten, we lowered your, your rates twenty-two percent. We had to increase them three percent in two thousand eleven because we cut them too quickly in two thousand ten. We kept them alone in two thousand twelve. We're gonna drop them a half a percentage this year because we're paying, we're paying the debt off on that new waterline. And this is a kind of equivalent to what the interest is on that going forward. So we'll look and see, but we think we're about where we need to be in regard to how we're going to be charging you. In Hamiltonian Park Sewer, in two thousand twelve, we gave you a thirty dollars and seventy-four cent reduction per quarter, per quarter during, yeah. And this year, we're proposing to give you another thirty-six dollars and eight cents per quarter. So probably altogether, we're probably talking about a twenty percent reduction to where the high was. We're gonna do this and still do all the work I'm talking about because of what we've, the improvements we've made. In Arcadia Hills, uh, we reduced your, your, your percentage, um, let me see. I think it was seven point eight percent in two thousand twelve. We're going twelve point one nine percent this, this, I'm sorry, of ten point one one percent this time. So in essence, we're going, and this is in water, we're gonna save you about twelve dollars and nineteen cents, uh, per quarter on water. So about fifty bucks a year less on water. The big one in Arcadia Hills is sewage. Last year, we gave you a sixteen point five percent reduction, which is fifty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. This year, we're gonna give you another ten point oh three percent reduction for thirty-two dollars and five cents. This is per quarter. This is ninety dollars and eighty-nine cents per quarter over a two-year period because of the new IMA, our cost-reduction plan, and the improvements we've put in play. On Stonehedge, we're going to give you a twenty-five dollar per quarter break because we're gonna eliminate the meter charges that are bought and paid for already. So that represents about a ten percent reduction per quarter. In Scothtown, uh, I don't have the exact dollar figures for two thousand twelve, but we reduced your, your quarterly bill by ten, ten point nine percent. We're gonna take it down another ten point two four percent this year. So in a two-year period, it's twenty-one point one four percent. So I'd rather imagine this twice than, right now, it's gonna be another seventeen dollars and eighty-five cents per quarter less than what you are currently paying. So every, every district, every district is getting a price reduction. Every district is in the black. This is the first time since I've been here in eight years that everybody's got a positive amount of money in the bank. We have been down as much as a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on some of these accounts at the end of the year on others. So we've made a lot of progress, but we made progress by creating the vision of how we wanted things to be, putting strategies in place, and then working the plan, putting the time, the money, and the resources to make it happen. So with that, I will open it up for any kind of questions or, huh?
I commend the board. You did a great job for Scothtown Park. The other, other districts, I'm not aware of what's going on. I have to say that my water filters, I was changing sometimes every, uh, four weeks, three to four weeks. Now I am changing the one seventy-six ones. Water's cleaner, less, uh, less particles. My question is, you were talking about the second well. The second well was always there. You just found it?
We found it back in two thousand six when we started cleaning the brush. You might have known it was there. We didn't. The man who left it and abandoned the thing, you know, it was a joke, laughing, calling me, "Boy, Doug, you won't believe what I just found."
You didn't see it?
We didn't see it.
I, I thought you were saying, I thought we counted a third well as a well.
No, no, we found a second.
Start selling our water to, uh...
Not in the village. No, we're not gonna do that. I can honestly say, I mean, for people like you and Jim Toldak and others who lived out there and lived through this, uh, we were just dazed from not having water coming out of your taps. I mean, the fact is, that tank was a third full of mud, dirt, corrosion, and our fear was that it was gonna rupture under the weight of all that sediment in there. And so...
And, and the owner of the well is still walking around the streets.
I guess he is.
And state where nobody ever put that guy in jail. And he was killing slowly.
I can't even imagine it. None of the houses had any.
One second, I did not hear what you said about the Hamiltonian sewer rates.
Okay. See, it's not the rates, it's the savings.
Okay.
Let me get to the right page. And I'm glad you asked the question. The way, the way you're charged, we have a rate, and then we have a flat rate for everybody on I-N-I.
Correct, yeah. That's why I missed.
The savings is on the I-N-I. So you'll not see any rate change on the rate per gallon usage. You see the rates, we're gonna charge you thirty-six dollars less per quarter for the I-N-I because that's where the improvement's been made. We're still producing the same amount of sewage, but we're not producing the same amount of water in the system.
Okay.
And you know, and what that, and what that does is everybody, from the elderly couple who doesn't use much water at all, to the young family with six kids, they're all gonna get a savings. If we'd done this based on rates, it would have been totally inequitable.
Okay, so, so the flat rate has been reduced, is what you're saying?
Yes, correct.
Okay, it would be really helpful if you noted that in the book when you do that, the old flat rate as opposed to the new flat rate.
Or it'll be in the, the budget? It isn't here. See, you're, you'll see, you see it's zero change. See, at Hamiltonian Park Sewer, it says zeros on that right-hand column.
They're all zero? Yeah, but I don't assume the, it says the flat rate is a hundred and twenty-two per home per quarter, right?
No, no, that's just what it costs you. The, the savings is, we're gonna charge you thirty-six dollars and eight cents.
Would you verify for me? Is it, what is the Hamiltonian flat rate at this point?
I wish Bill was here. I'm saying it's a hundred and twenty-two dollars per home per quarter, but I don't know that. I'm assuming that's what it is.
Okay.
But it's gonna be, but that is thirty-six dollars and eight cents less than what it was prior quarters.
Right, that's why I said it'd be helpful if you missed both of them, like you do with the rates where it took out...
Sure, I can do that.
Okay. You answered that question for me, all right?
Now, by the way, the, the current quarter you're in, you're gonna be billed at the old rates. This doesn't start, you're gonna see the first bill, uh, for the, I think the billing is from May, starts in May, May, June, July. So with the bill you're getting in August, we'll reflect these rates.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Yes, sir, in back.
Mr. Bluefield.
Yes. Well, you're the man that puts the pipe in. Oh, right.
You're saying, no, no more breaks over there, no more...
No breaks. You did a great job.
Thank you.
For, for you people don't know in the, in the mail, this is, this is Pepe. He's the contractor, lives in Hamiltonian Park, put the line in, did a wonderful job. And we can say to him, we haven't had a break since you put it in two thousand seven.
But I thought, what do you pay for that? We still paying for the debt?
Well, now, we, we got four hundred thousand from the federal government. You charge us nine hundred thousand.
That much?
Yeah. If you wanna do something, if I was okay...
That's the right room, Mr. I don't see.
So we had to borrow a half a million.
Oh, no.
Wrong question.
All right.
He, he don't look healthy just like that.
I have a tough question for you.
Okay, thank you.
I have to say, first of all, I gotta say, you've been doing a wonderful job.
Thank you very much.
One question I got about this, uh, this, uh, New York Farms LLC.
Yes.
About this sewage and the water.
Yes.
How did that kind of work hooking up into Hamiltonian Park? I'm there for about thirty-eight years. We always have problems with water, never... We always have problems with water, never had enough water. How did it do what? They make really, they make really wells?
We had public hearings on it in here where people came...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, no problem, no problem. And the engineer for us said that, looking at all the water that New York Farms has, they have much more water than they need from their wells. And what we're gonna do is put a second storage tank up that they're gonna pay bulk up to put in between them and Maplewood across the street. And we're gonna loop the water so that Hamiltonian Park and New York Farms will have twice the amount of firewater for fire protection. It should really help us out tremendously in Hamiltonian Park in regard to the volume of water available.
They gotta drill new wells, you say?
They got them already, yeah.
Oh, they did?
They tested the wells and they're ready to go.
They're not in the same vein that we are.
Absolutely not.
Okay. How did that kind of work? We're gonna put out new lift stations because the ones in there are not gonna...
No, the, what they're going to do, they're going to put in their own lift station. They're gonna tie into our pressure main or whatever it's called.
To our...
Right, and so, it's all engineered. We don't have to replace our pumps.
Well, our first main going up over there, you know, it's leaking all the time, you know. That brother that lives over there, you know, he actually made rain number two every time the rain a little bit, and if he needs his basement, gets all for the sewage and all that kind of stuff. So, if you add up some more without changing those pipes, you know...
I don't know, I don't really, that's the first I've heard about that.
You've already heard about it?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's Mr. Peacock, number two over there, he actually...
Oh, no, 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 that's a different problem. Different story. We know about that.
You know about that, right?
Yes, yeah.
Actually, because it's my neighbor, and I don't want to complain to me.
And you're a nice guy, you're just a nice guy.
Yes, it's me, I say, what do I do? I say, I don't know, I better go see Mr. Bluefield.
We're already bent for the last six years.
I'm working, I'm working. I have no time for politicians.
You're half a million dollars, I know it is.
I gotta work.
Good, thank you very much.
One of the added benefits to that, to bringing these other houses online and bringing them into your district is, all of their infrastructure will be brand-new. So, whatever repairs have to be made, if it's on the basic infrastructure, they will share in the cost. But their infrastructure's new, so they will share in the cost of fixing probably your infrastructure. So, you broaden the base of how many people are gonna pay for the repair, and really, the repair will be focused in the older subdivision. So, I mean, you have tremendous benefits for these people coming into your system rather than going directly into their own systems. And that's one of the reasons why we did it.
Thank you, Bill. Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
The only reason we use the mic is because that's how it records in the minutes. Plus, you wanna be on camera, for sure. There you go.
You're to be commended both for your civic and your fiscal and financial responsibility because having experienced what happened in Scotch Town, the financial scare that we went through with prior administrations that sat here, you know, they were looking to, you know, put a Cadillac in the garage, and we didn't need it. We needed somebody to look at what we had objectively with, you know, as you used the term before with Joe, with a sharp pencil, to fix what needed to be fixed and not just come in clean house and do everything bottom-up. And we did not need that. And I just wanted to take, and I support what Bob said, that's why I wanted to follow up on that point. You guys did a wonderful job, and we'd be commended for it.
Good, thank you very much.
And my wife told me when I came here, find out how much the water's going up.
It's going down.
Well, I know, believe me, it was an easy conversation, right?
She may take a lot of dinner for that.
Okay, and, yes, sir.
Senator Ockham, Hamiltonian Park. Every year, we come here and we do the same dance, we find out how much we're gonna be paying. But in any of these papers, there's no figures concerning how much money is taken in by the district and exactly where it goes. Is it much to ask for once a year to see where our money really goes?
Well, we can have the budget office print that out, yes.
Which is another page in our, in these papers.
Sure, right, we can do that.
Oh, okay.
One of the things that we try to do is simplify it to the point where it's not too cumbersome, unless, I mean, you may understand, but we can certainly get you, we can still get that to you now. But a lot of times, people come in and they're glazed over by looking at all these numbers and wondering what, but people who like them, love them.
Yeah, how much money does I'll get and for what?
Right.
How much rainwater is going through this system?
I can say this to you, I did have it for the town board, and we went through these numbers on Hamiltonian Park to the village than you did last year. So, 2% of that great big number is what you save. So, it's working. This INI reduction is working. So, yeah, we'll have numbers for you next year.
I just wanna add to that, Doc, if you remember a couple of years back when we spoke about that before we went into arbitration, you even asked me the question, John, about the INI. Back then, Hamiltonian was like three and a half times the water you take in. So, you were taking in like eight and a half million, if I remember correctly, and you were giving them close to 29 million gallons. So, subtract the eight, 21 million was water. That was back then, it's not happening now.
Another question, Doc?
Sure.
Many years ago, probably around Hamiltonian Park, you know where the worst places are.
We do. And Hamiltonian Park, and 35 gallons a minute. Our estimate is that we get five million gallons of water of that 21 million you're talking about going to the village. Now, there's another line, and Mr. Noel and myself are talking about digging up 600 feet long. But that line, to dig that line up is catastrophic money-wise. It sucks all the money out that we would use on some quick fixes. So, what we're doing is, we're picking the low fruit first. When we pick all the low fruit, we're gonna get a ladder and go up in the tree, and we'll use that smoke test to do that part of it.
How much is 600 feet?
Uh, I have it in my depth there, it's quite expensive, so many, I just don't remember, but it's dozens of dollars per foot. But then the other thing is, I put in stimulus money two years ago, and I think I put in for like five to 10 million dollars to rebuild both sewer districts in Hamiltonian Park and Arcadia Hills. You know it very well, you know, uh, 10 million dollars. $115 a foot. Brother, because of ballpark, his ballpark figure, it's about $115 a foot to dig it up.
That's not right.
Well, no, to dig it up, not to repair.
How much late, you can't late pay for it.
We just got a bid back there, $70 a foot.
You got it.
Okay.
It's roughly about $80 a foot.
Well, certainly, when we get to that level, we will, we will, real glad for bid, that's just a job.
But if you end up that much of water going in there, you're saying, you know, the wrongest way...
Well, we know that. That's why we're...
Might as well bite the bullet.
Well, we're spending $200,000 cap back in it. We're gonna keep doing this, for a five-year period, you put in about a million bucks. And we wanna keep the rates coming down. We're really trying to make this thing as palatable. We could go out and borrow all the money, five million bucks, and kill everybody, just like the village did when they put in a new sewer plant. The rates went off route, and we just don't wanna do that. Okay, any other questions?
Right here, Doc.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Martinez. I mean, I don't know if this is a question or a petition. I'm a new homeowner, as I say, I owned my home for about four years, you know, I really work in the city, so I just enjoy it, I mean, the weekend. I was noticing that Hamiltonian Park has a different, like, rate in gallons, like we do. Uh, I don't spend not even $1,000 gallons for three months, and for me, I think it's very high the price that I'm paying for such a small amount of gallons that I'm consuming. So, it's very possible that we at Arcadia Hills also have the same tax category that you have on yours with $5,000 gallons?
No, I'll tell you why. The rates were established years ago, and each subdivision has a different number of homes. As Mr. Catarino alluded to, the more homes you have, the less it is per home. The cost to get the water to you, whether you use any of it or not, is the cost that's in those lower rates. And maybe there's a fixed cost just running the pumps and all that, whether you use five gallons or 10,000 gallons. And so, we have, we have established these rates based on experience. And so, we get this question every year, it's a very good question, particularly get it from a lot of people who are either single or older and don't have children around, and they don't wanna spend all this money on water. But that's, and this is universally done across the nation with all water districts, and there are different levels based on how much it costs to get the water in there. So, that's how it works. Now, maybe one day, we can bring it down. I don't wanna be saying, no, we can't. But I'm sure as we get more cost reduction placed, maybe we can. That's the goal. That's a good question.
Thank you.
Yes, Steve. Okay. Folks, thank you very much for coming. And... Okay, we got more, we got more. Yes?
I like the house.
Hey, Jim? Was Michelle in your class? Figly, you met Bert and Garholm. Michelle Figley, do you remember her? The little girl?
Okay.
Oh, yeah. What was her, I'm sorry. What was her dad's story?
Thanks.
All right.
He was my...
Oh, is that right?
Congratulations, you're here.
Happy birthday.
You got a lot of...
$115.
$115.
I'm gonna have to replace that 600 feet.
$90,000.
$90,000.
$90,000.
$90,000.
All right.
All right.
He was my...
Oh, is that right?
Congratulations, you're here.
That's it.
I'm gonna have to go on Sunday and see you.
That's it.
Happy birthday, Dave.
You got a lot of...
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
$115.
All right, now, we, if we can, we need to get back to our meeting, but good night, folks. Have a good one.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
You're welcome to stay.
We're gonna get to you in just a moment.
You're welcome to stay.
Under old business, would someone like to make a motion, we approve the minutes, a work session's on February 25th, March 11th, March 25th, 2013, and regular meetings on February 28th, March 14th, and March 28th, 2013.
So? Exactly. So, February 25th has already been accepted, so you can take that off.
Good night, guys, thank you.
March 19th, okay.
Thank you.
And then I had a few changes, minor changes that I gave to the facility for...
Okay. All right, all payers say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Would someone like to make a motion to authorize the supervisor to pay manual accounts payable check run as a 4-9-2013, amounting to $9,811.38, and accounts payable check run for 4-4-2013, amounting to $179,243.72.
Motion, second.
All payers say aye?
Aye.
Now, ladies, you have something you'd like to require?
Yeah.
I'll take the microphone.
Okay.
Here, you have this one.
Okay.
And if you wanna break you this song, that's okay.
I'll go ahead and speak in the sun. We may have some of the same issues, but I'd like to...
Sure.
Um, which was Charlie, who's in Hampton Road, Goshen?
Okay, Hampton Road?
Excuse me?
You said Hampton Road?
Hampton Road.
Okay.
Uh, the reason I'm here is because we have a neighbor, 51 Hampton Road, they own a horse farm. I cannot tell you the owner's name, but it was a prior that I let share. Uh, okay, it's being investigated for arson.
Oh, I know what you mean, yes.
Okay, so, they knocked down the house, they did not get a permit, the debris is still there.
Right.
It's coming into the road, it's getting, I'm directly across, so some of the debris is coming onto my property. Um, and now they're building, they're using storage containers, and they're putting up a fence, and I don't think they have a permit, and they're gonna put cattle there.
Okay.
I wanna know if there's any recourse, because they just seem to...
But we need to look back into that. That is still under investigation, criminal investigation?
But the fact of the...
And so, they can't, they can't touch that pile of stuff?
Oh.
Uh, the insurance companies are involved, but Dennis, Dennis is our attorney to the town. What, how do we approach this?
Yeah, the building inspector can go out and...
We'll do that.
I mean, I know he has inspected because they have an indoor pool, and I can bring the two young children, and they didn't have a fence around them, and he just hung up a styrofoam fence, but I believe one of the firefighters fell into the indoor door of the fire.
Right.
But the question is, if they can't remove the debris, they did knock the house down, they took tractors or whatever, they destroyed the house, and piled it, they're adding to the pile. You can see trees, you can see their garbage, their garbage reforming. Are they allowed to do that?
No, they shouldn't be, because the proper procedure would be for Neo or someone from the office up there, inspect, investigate, and possibly cite. I don't know what status is.
Well, these people live out of town.
Because we...
No, no, they're bankrupt. May very well be that this is owned by the bank now.
But it still would be an enforcement action, yeah.
like, I wasn't sure if the building inspector was just going and step.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely, totally separate and distinct from the criminal aspect.
What we'll do in the morning, I will see the building inspector tomorrow, have him start this, uh, process, but, uh, we're going to have to probably get legal involvement, and when you get legal involvement, sometimes it takes a while, but I know that this is big, this, this, uh, this is a very convoluted, it involves even, I think I'm not even going to mention...
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm not familiar, it's interesting.
You know what I'm talking about, you go out the...
I get to the road, sure.
But you can see it from seventeen.
Right, yeah, I'm aware of that.
It's a dreadful fucking thing.
Well, it wasn't dreadful when I tore the house five years ago, it used to be the property, it wasn't just...
Oh, yeah?
It's really...
Okay, I got it written down here.
I don't, want to use the microphone if I don't have to?
You have, that's how we record you.
Okay. My name is Sharon Quipemotion, I live at fifty-two Hampton Road, and I can tell you that Neil Hollering has been on that property more times than I can count.
Right.
I have also called your office twice last year in March, I never received a phone call. Um, I also have been told by Neil Hollering that he is not allowed on property unless he is invited, and he also told me, his secretary told me that the fence that was around the pool that the assistant chief of the fire department fell in during the night of the fire was, was perfectly fine, that it was, didn't have to be brought up to code. It is my impression that when a property is sold, that before it can be, um, when renovations are due, or at the time of the inspection of the sale, the things that are not up to today's codes need to be brought up to code, like if you have a deck that is...
Sure, that's true.
Right, so, um, I believe her name is Kathleen, told me that the fence was fine. As far as when the fence was put in in nineteen seventy, it didn't require a fence. So, um, Neil Hollering also told me, um, regarding the pile of garbage in the back on the property, that they were bringing dump truck loads full of rubbish in, um, and I am the one who called Albany, and I spoke to the asbestos control and had the inspector come, do his inspection, and shut them down when they knocked the house down. Um, they were told at that time that the only way to remove that home would be to tank it for hazmat and go in with a hazmat team.
That's correct.
And they were told to hire a hazmat team, work with Neil Hollering.
Who's going to pay them? It's, what I'm saying, we think it's litigation, it's all backed by banks and all these things, yeah.
It's in foreclosure with the, with the original property owner, which is Victor.
Right.
Um, Victor, uh, I think is Sensiona, or, um, he's trying to get farm back, because they haven't paid him in two years.
Right.
Um, who, he, he's a very good friend of mine, so everything that's going on there, I'm, I'm aware of.
Right.
Um, but besides all of that, um, speaking of the rubbish that is out back, that, um, we were told was asbestos being brought in, trucked in, truckload after truckload, large dump truck. Um, Neil Hollering again told me that he cannot enter property to go and inspect that pile without an invitation.
We, we will, I will take care of this in the morning, in terms of, of starting something. Now, there may be some reason why he cannot.
Well, he told me to sneak on property and take pictures. That's what he told me to do, which I, I find, I find here that Neil Hollering just doesn't want to get involved.
Yeah.
And I've spoken with Broderick a thousand times about this, am I correct? I mean, we've had conversations regarding this matter for the past year.
He put up no partnership signs.
He actually put up no partnership signs. There are rail containers on the property, four or five of them, rail containers, like big shipping containers.
Okay.
That are sitting on the property directly in front of both our homes. They've been sitting there for forever. We were told by Neil Hollering, because it's agriculture, that they could be there.
That may, that may be.
Well, here it states that you cannot have a storage container visible to the boundary. Here it says, uh, outdoor storage of materials, equipment, or vehicles in an order, uh, in yards, provide that such outdoor storage, not a seat tent, let me, let me find it, okay, ten percent of the area of the lot, and is effectively screened from public roads and from any adjacent residential district.
This is probably agricultural exempt.
Well...
I mean, I, you know, you've got a lot of technical questions here, and I think maybe the better part of our here is to have a meeting between me, you, Neil, and our attorney to figure out how we proceed on, because this is going, I, I know, I don't even know who owns it.
Giorgio DiLorenzo owns it, and San Lombardo lives in a camper on property.
Right, but I mean, but there's, I know this whole thing is...
There's a lot of...
Is...
Well, loophole.
Well, it's being investigated by some high-level people in...
The state leagues in the town of Monroe have it.
No, beyond them.
No, it's not, because I was, I was at the deposition with, uh, their Nelson, um, this is what, the attorney who's trying it for the insurance company. I've also spoken to the investigator last...
Well, maybe you know more about than I do.
It's the state troopers.
But I, I heard that there was even some attempt...
No, the feds are not involved. They're trying to prosecute them federally for fraud and arson, but the state troopers told me that they may be trying them for federal prosecution, but it's still a state investigation.
Well, that could be, but I know there's some federal people involved.
Yes.
I don't, and it may be very clandestine, there's, it goes beyond this property is what I'm saying.
Uh-huh.
Not the owner.
Right.
But the people who set the fire.
Who burned it down, yeah.
And, and, and I think there's as warm as your arm of this, the things that they're looking at, and I, I don't want to say more than I know, but I think really, if we want to get to the bottom of this, we probably ought to have a joint meeting between Neil, myself, our attorney, or whoever, to find out what, what the issues are, what the options are, and how long we expect to do it. But I do know from other land that we've had in the town of Ocean, it looks like a pigsty, sometimes it takes a long time to work through.
It took six months just to get somebody to cut their grass, and they did load it down.
Can I just say, they've taken the containers now and made a wall across the front of the property, they backed them up, back to back.
I saw that yesterday.
And I don't understand that, that's visible by our property, that is a complete eyesore when you're standing on either one of ours, front or any, I mean, it's horrible.
Right.
It's an absolute eyesore. The garbage that is piled up, you can see from seventeen, it's a huge amount of trash out back.
Yeah.
You know, the debris from the house is blowing all over the neighborhood, I walked in my dog the other day, siding is blowing at me, yeah, it's just, it's become a hazard to live there. Now, I have a question. What is the zoning for a fence for cattle? What, what is the height requirement? Does it require a permit on land? They took the fence down that was originally there five years ago. There's been no fence for, for forever.
Well, this, the, the firming is ag exempt, they call it ag exemption.
Right.
Uh, they can do a lot of things that you and I can't do on our property.
But does it have to be a, a fence bearing enough weight to hold a cow back? Not a three-foot chicken water fence, correct?
Well...
If you're responsible only, you hunt your cows.
Well, that's what they have, that's what they put up.
Yeah.
Six, a three-foot chicken water is now going to hold cows, and I do believe that the line of containers is their back wall. You know what I mean, they're going, it's like...
Yeah, right.
That's what they're using.
Well, I'm going to have Neil go out tomorrow and look at it, I'm going to have, and try to set a meeting between...
All I want to say to that is, good luck.
I, I want to have a...
Good luck. You may get further with it than I did, but for five years I've been fighting with Neil Hollering and everybody else.
Well, I didn't...
Because he tell you it's not a police matter, Neil Hollering tells you you can't enter property without an invitation.
Now, are you avail, are, are you available for a meeting on this?
Whenever you need.
Okay, what is your telephone number?
Um, I work for JPK Environmental.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to know?
I work for JPK Environmental, Joe Pops' office.
Yeah.
You're more than welcome to call me there from nine to three, my door's open.
Is the only access addressed to the property, uh, through Hampton Road?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
Then this, well, okay, you know, I think you can address it in a number way, what's being, yeah, what's being described to me is, uh, not accurate, and by accurate, I don't mean to say that you don't have your facts right, but there's a great number of things can be done.
Yeah.
Baseball, what's described to me is going on in that property.
Well, what we need to do is, we need to find out what the...
Yeah, yeah, we got to get into it.
We got to get in.
Very accessed by the highway, and now they've put up a huge pile of manure. Okay, it's agriculture, but do I have to wake up to green air every day? I mean, it's disgusting. I've never had this, I've lived there for seventeen years, and we've had horses, and, you know, Victor had it, it was beautiful.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it was a rundown, ratty horse farm that was just beautiful.
Yep.
They've turned this in now, it's like, the smell, my kids go out the door in the morning to the bus, they're like, "Oh, my God," you don't even want to swallow because you can taste it.
I will try to set a meeting, uh, again, between our attorney, myself, Neil, or whoever else we need to have there, to get something started.
So, my question is, is hazmat suits have to be involved and asbestos, and if they don't have the money to remove that stuff, will it stain it?
I have, I have no idea. Uh, you know, I just don't know. I do know that when you take a building down, the entire building is considered asbestos related, or, or, in, in, you know, involved. Uh, where, and when that building was standing up, they might have gone in and found out where the asbestos was, like in the basement of the furnace of this, but now that it's down, my understanding is the whole building, that whole pile is considered asbestos.
Right. I have been told by the investigator, um, the fire investigator for New York State.
Right.
And the one who did the investigation on that, um, Joe Myers.
I was just going to say, it was Joe.
I spoke with Joe Myers, he said that building is ready to go. They do not need it any further for any investigation, they found their point of origin, they know where the fire was, was started, they have done everything they need with that building, and that building can be removed. And if you need to speak with Joe Myers, he...
Well, listen, well, no, no, I, I, what it is, is the, the man who owns it is the one who's going to have to remove it.
Can he be forced to do that? And, and I can tell you, he's dragging it, it's slowly getting longer.
Well, that's why we need, you know, that's why we need the attorney involved.
You know, it's slowly disappearing, little pieces, and then they'll throw a tree on it to make, to fill in that area.
Okay.
He's burying it in the back of the property is what he's doing, and I believe that's where that dump pile is coming from.
Okay.
There, there are going to be shady people.
We will, uh, meet you over at Joe's, uh, seven...
You can do that. We'll make Joe buy lunch, with all that money. Oh, no, you're saving the money, not him.
He's still getting money.
He's getting his fair share.
Is this place closed down?
Yes. Well, that's another thing.
It was, it was, the building caught fire.
Right, I'm aware.
It broke down, but it's still, I mean, the man who owns it, he's aware.
But now where are they getting their water from?
I don't know.
Where are they getting their electricity from? The man is living in the camper on site, where is he flushing? Where is his waste going to? Where is his electricity coming from?